Lunch, those kinds of things.
Right.
But I, 8:00 P.M. works for me.
Yeah.
Because we would not be hosting it any later.
Right. So I mean, there's timing restrictions, I guess you could do it so many feet from a physical residence. Although if it's 8:00.
We have fireworks until 10:00 in theory in the town, so it's not, I mean, that, so we're not.
Right.
That, that's kind of the component that, you know, they're prepared to shut it off in book prior to that.
Yeah.
And I'd be open to something else, but 8:00 P.M. was, was a nice.
Early enough.
Early enough that you're not going to disrupt families. You're, you're not playing loud music into the middle of the night and disturbing residents.
Right, it's kind of like what we were trying to do with the noise ordinance for all loud things, but 10:00 P.M. I think was the line.
And they're willing to take it sooner, I mean, so it's, um, so.
And I know Darlene's getting at, like, it's hard to do the run up straight.
Right.
Can the select board just approve, can they?
They want the language so that it can be sent, they're, they're planning on coming back on Thursday with a select board meeting. We told them that we needed them to, we.
But there's no way the select board can just say.
No.
In the new case, boom.
And it's gonna be, it's gonna be put on a town warrant, it's gonna be voted on, it's gonna be language, it's gonna be sent to the town attorney to review before, but it's gonna follow the full.
Can you just change what this is saying?
That qualifies as spot zoning.
Can you just, can you?
He's actually trying to cop to the nail. But I, I don't, I, I think we were looking for assistance in the language. Knowing what, you know, where you've got, um.
Any rate, and where did I, what page did I? Point six. So it's just what's allowed in the zone, so nothing added to that. There's no language, without time, just like, how many, or how far from a residence, there's no language done in that.
And one of the other things I was, I was thinking of is limiting the attendance. I can speak personally for my business, we have a 50-person indoor capacity, which doubles when the, when it's seasonally warm, um, so 50 outdoors, 50 indoors.
Right.
So for us, it's, we're not attracting large crowds, but I understand that there's a possibility that some businesses could.
Right.
So I think, I mean, if you're using indoor places solely for eating and drinking, dancing, or live entertainment permitted until 8:00 P.M. I mean, I don't know, it, that's almost too worried, you know.
To just add hours?
To, to take out the no dancing, so is it indoor places, indoor slash outdoor places solely for eating and drinking, dancing, or live entertainment permitted until 8:00 P.M.?
That restricts the, um, time. Do you have any other concerns besides the time of day?
Personally, no.
Yeah, I mean, someone could be having a graduation party at their house next door to you until midnight, it's.
Right.
You know, but it's, that's a one-on thing versus a, a business having it.
Right.
Every Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Saturday night kind of deal, I think that that's what everybody was worried about when this thing was presented, that.
Right, I understand that blanket anytime, anywhere is not what we're, that's not what we're seeking, and that's not what you're seeking.
Which, uh, this, which is why I think an earlier end to the event, even beyond what our 10:00 P.M. fireworks rules are.
Right, and then it sets some limits that aren't more enforceable by the sheriff as well.
Right.
So I mean, that's, it's just, that's kind of, I don't know, what are your thoughts? That, we, we weren't, we, this, this select board was not opposed to the concept, we were trying to figure out and not be the ones to write it.
Right.
Coming from you on a recommendation, and then have the select board decide Thursday.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just trying to think how someone would think that's trying to get around this thing. Not being you.
No.
I totally understand. Someone, somewhere else.
Might not have candy shops or something to that effect, but right next to a housing development or something.
It's too bad Jim's not here, because I'm quite sure they all thought out the last time this got brought up.
Yeah, Jim was very against it. Yeah, he mentioned Rock Row many times in the past, right? And I didn't even know what Rock Row was, and now I do. Yeah. So, um, but this is, so this is, here's the thing, okay, but see, the other thing is too, doesn't it have to be written for the warrant like three days ago?
Because it's, we're, in theory, yes, that it's gonna be decided on Thursday, because it seems to be had enough time to get it to Sally. Um, and it's really, it's, it's, again, this is just us putting language out there and then letting the community determine it. No, no, it's not, it's us going home and having to write this up, and then have to make it right, and then send it to the town, so you can send it to the lawyers, so you can send it to you for Thursday. Which is two days from now.
It doesn't necessarily have to go on the town meeting warrant, there's a very real chance that we're gonna have a special town meeting for other ordinance changes, like the marine resources ordinance, and there's some tower.
But that's getting presented tomorrow night also, the ordinance. So there, there are ordinances like right in the hopper.
Yeah, and town meeting is.
On May 16th.
Five weeks away, so I think Darlene's correct that the timing does not check out for town meeting, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't move forward with it, you should move forward with it.
It's, I, I mean, it's up to you.
All right, are you wanting this for Thursday?
In an ideal world, yes. I don't benefit from it.
And I mean, I, I am not, I am not going to bribe board members. But I'm happy to support myself.
I, I, I'm a fan of, you know, it's like the woman who, who got her salon, I'm a fan of supporting new business in the community, that's my goal as a select board member.
Hi.
To help foster revenue and business to the community.
I, I am too, I don't get, I just happened to last minute and I.
It's, and it just, this came up out of, at last Thursday, and this was the criteria, we said, well, come to the planning board, I said, come to the planning board, it's Tuesday, ask them to, here's the thing, and, and, and it's, I mean, I don't know.
If I had an extra month and a half if the plan, if the select board hadn't had.
I understood, you know, that's why we should have five.
Or I could have actually six days if someone had called me.
Uh, but so it's, so it's, it's, if, I mean, when I look at the language, if you took out the word "no", and just said, "until 8:00 P.M.", is that something you're comfortable with in that presentation for the warrant?
Well, there's three of us here out of five.
I do think that Jim was really adamant about, he, remember, he really, and like, I think, he was really wound up about it, and I think he was worried about Rock Row and all that other stuff, which I don't think any of us could ever see happening in West Bath.
Well, we, we put an end, an end like 8:00 P.M. as the drop dead, you're done. I'm confident, oh, I shouldn't say that, but they, that they're, they're gonna follow, and it's, I don't know, you guys decide, you got, it's, it's, are you comfortable making that quick edit or not, and that's really what it comes down to. And I don't want to force you one way or the other, it's completely up to you.
I don't mind having it 8:00, even 9:00. Even necessarily 10:00.
I don't know if I'm gonna take it that far, because I think you're pushing it into a noise area.
No, but what I'm saying is, is it doesn't, it doesn't bother me, I, I don't think that it's a bad thing.
But I'd rather he's Jim, and he's out of concern.
That, if it becomes a problem, then we would look into it and see if there was something we could do to reverse. But without writing something in here to say that if the establishment isn't conforming to the rules, there are.
The license will be revoked.
Fees, licenses are revoked, whatever, the, not, it's, it's, the approval will be revoked, I mean, without that sort of stuff in here, I think we're looking for trouble.
Accountability.
So there has, yeah, there has to be accountability, there has to be teeth to it, that if someone violates something.
Yep.
The approvals revoked. Do something, absolutely.
I mean, I think that, I'm all for that, I'm just trying to, it's up to you, um, knowing the timeline, if you'd like to pursue this, this, this was.
We talked about it too, back when we worked on this last year at the very last minute, um, and that we would look at this later, and now we're waiting, um, anyway, our, our ordinances are soon to be started to be reviewed.
Yeah, but I want, they're, they're.
By consultant.
A year out in theory, I don't know how long it's gonna take to really pull that.
I was about to say that. That's the reason why we hadn't looked at it yet, because we're waiting on a consultant who's working on the comp plan, which we can't do anything until that's finished. So we did discuss doing this, so, to, to me personally, I don't mind having it, and as long as we have something in here that if the establishment is violating those time rules, that they lose their. Permissions to do that, and you lose their approval and have to stop.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
And I think that that's fair. At, at this moment, I can't think of anything else that would be like a fail-safe. Is this something that you would want to consider as a planning board when you're considering new businesses?
You mean?
Well, speaking from being one of the few businesses that would take advantage of this. A, a new business, knowing that this was now permissible, if they intended to have live music, or, I'm sorry, live entertainment, would there be any sort of controls that the board could enact? While they're evaluating those new applications?
They would follow all the same precautions that had been set forth.
I think this, the board, actually, the, um. We have to follow what the book says, that's why I'm saying, just putting it here that it's 8:00, without some sort of backup, that if the business doesn't follow the rules, we can't shut them down. Um, it's a problem, so we don't have a lot of actual leeway on telling people that they can and can't do things that aren't in this book, so we wouldn't, you know.
Is it a heavier lift to add that, that statement than what Suzanne has suggested? Or is it like the same amount of effort to do both, adding the permissible language, but also adding a statement about enforcement or compliance?
Well, I think, I think there's an enforcement piece, by adding that in there, I think it's important, and I think she, I think that's a better safety net than just saying 8:00 P.M. I agree with your thought on that.
It's actual words that have to go somewhere, so that's a little extra effort, it's not, it's, it's not, um, appropriate to put it in the land use table, so this is basically has the use, and then it can be done in these different zones, you've seen it, it's my, so that really, that actual language has to go somewhere else. You can put a footnote on it, put it somewhere else, try to figure out where, it's not a lot, but it's Tuesday, and so.
This happened, Kate, we just came to our town on Thursday.
So it's just Suzanne and I, so what do you guys think about this, what do you, how do you feel about it? It was not instructed that I meant to come to the planning board, so I. No, no, it's fine.
No, it's, it's important.
It's, 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 it's. It's, it's fine, it's fine, it's just the timing was always like this, it seems.
No, it's not, it's not your fault, we're trying to help support it, we're just trying to figure out to do it the right way, because the select board wasn't against it, we just don't know how to do it, is the point.
I guess is the best.
So, your thoughts, Jamie?
I, I, I'm on board, but what you're saying is, you know, having a stop time and having something to enforce it.
Yeah, okay, Jerry?
I'm fine, I have no issues with like the 8:00 P.M. thing, and the enforcement thing, like, who would enforce it, John? Or the sheriff's?
I don't think John's going out there to.
That's okay.
Here's the, here's the thing, though, what it would boil down to, I think, is, is if I were to start catching wind of it, then I would, then I would go.
Right.
And check it out at that time of the day.
And then, so what would the enforcement language say, what would we, what would it say?
The reversal of the approval.
Yeah, revoke the approval.
Yeah, you revoke the approval to have, um, live entertainment.
Does Sally have to work at all that stuff too, or?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, maybe they'd give like a warning or something, just stuff like, you know.
Well, that's the thing, it's not that simple.
Right.
But she, but she, if we send her the concept, she'll write the, the piece.
We can make it that, um, if there's music or entertainment beyond eight, then the enforcement will be that the entertainment pieces revoked.
On first offense?
Sure.
Okay.
So I'm feeling tonight.
Sure.
Then I'll see what the music gets it.
I like getting home early, it's fine.
What I think is, is, is.
I'm okay with that.
We just wait three times.
But I think first offense holds legitimacy to it, that it's, it's a do or die piece.
This is about research for.
The town, the town, right.
Should we say 9:00, if we're gonna do that, be like, let's just say 9:00.
I think eight is early, I would go with nine, personally, I would go with nine.
I would too, yeah.
I mean, I.
I think we could fly and drink and, I'm all for it. All right, so.
Yeah, that keeps it from being complicated, doesn't it?
Right.
I do, I think, I think it, one and done.
Violated, then they're done.
One and done is, is it, and it shows the community that we've put forth the effort to curtail.
Bad offenders will not be tolerated.
Right, and they pour their beer out of the parking lot.
Chill, how's that already?
Alcohol's not permitted beyond a certain point.
Well, outside in the, in the fenced area.
So, first offense, lose ability to have entertainment, and then if they offend after that, it's $300 fine every time.
Does the town have the authority to revoke permission to operate a business?
We have permission to revoke.
Occupancy?
Not occupancy, but a li, it's a licensing, it's not a license structure, it's a, um, an ordinance, man, it's, we're, we're setting boundaries, so we have the right to enforce our boundary. So saying you can't, you have to have your light shaded in the light plan, if you don't shade it, then it's a violation.
Right. What do you think, John, second offense, $300 fine?
Add zero.
$3,000 fine?
Yeah.
So their license is revoked, but then they have another, so they're playing without a license at that point.
No, they're no under entertainment, after that.
And it's not really a license.
What, no, I don't.
What is the law, so what does the ordinance say currently as an offense to live music or entertainment?
It just says it's not allowed.
There isn't one.
Right.
That's why.
In theory, it was.
So it would be, it would be, you know, you're in violation of the land use ordinance, and then if you continue to do it, you'd get, you'd get a notice of violation, and then it would.
And then what is it, like a $100 fine every day or something like that?
We, we, we can put a pacey out to that.
So that's what could happen, let's just say, if it were happening now, and we were getting complaints, and I had to go act on it, because it's not an allowable use, that's what would happen.
How do you guys feel about mine?
I thought that was pretty fair, what you said.
Sure. I'll give the 300. And 9:00 P.M. or 8:00 P.M.? I say 9:00 P.M., that's my.
I think we go with nine.
I say nine.
Yes. I'll go nine. Can I hear your tone?
No.
What time do you close?
Nine.
Nine.
It was a joke, sorry.
All right, you're fine.
Somebody was a sister. Yes.
All right.
Yeah, so, motion that I revise the ordinance to do this.
Motion that Darlene stays up late for the next two nights to amend the ordinance as we spoke about. As written.
Darlene's gonna do it once.
Sorry, Jim.
The select.
How many hours has that been? 24 hours or?
No, it's a whole week, a whole week in advance, so that means I have.
So you could have last Wednesday.
You could have this next, last Thursday, that would be great.
The one's not getting approved tomorrow, that's okay.
I would like to apologize that I did not come.
No, 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 you're fine, you, you, you did what you should have, because what we do, after you come and tell us what you want to do, is we send you to the selectmen, because they're supposed to decide what we do. So the process was good.
It worked.
And it worked, it's fine, it's just all good.
All right, we have a motion.
We have a motion and second, um, all as a favor. Okay, thank you very much for your time.
I think it's a great idea, and I'm not trying to be, not be bought out, I'm just. It just needs to be enforced.
The timing is, the timing is not good at all.
So, I left, no, um, we had a couple of ordinances that were properly written and presented from you guys, do we want to include those in this round of?
Which ones are you talking about? All, none were done but the site plan revisions.
But the only, only two made it to the warrants.
Nope, they all did.
Did they?
They all got done, except for the site plan.
Do you want to put that on there, or is it not ready?
It is not ready, and I'm not doing it.
No, I was trying to expedite whatever you had already completed, to, to chosen up, go back.
Everything's been done.
Okay.
Except for the site, ever met. So it's all good. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it. We have minutes to read.
So we'll be, uh, others there?
I'll be there.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jim.
You all so much, appreciate it. I'll have to come check it out. There was other business. But it's impossible to prove, it's totally out. Let me see. What was it? Oh, so, the, oh, update from the comp plan, we just had that last night. In about a month, the draft copy will be ready for all of the committees and the public to look at. It's very important that we look at it, because there's a ton of stuff in there that we have action items for, um, and we'll have to work through those as we go along. I wanted to get you a copy ahead of time, but they said, no, I haven't given my thing until we go through it, um, and so like next, at the next meeting, which is like in two weeks.
Yeah, 24.
We'll go through the land use section, which is like the last one that we're going through, and then they're gonna have it all compiled together with the maps, and then we'll have a copy for us to review.
Okay. Speaking of maps, the comp plan, how do we get the new map blown up that shows the scale? Christine said you had it printed, as well as a digital file, which is what you print, the maps.
This big map here. It shows the residential and the rural residential as yellow, they're all the same color, so you can't tell which is which.
But there's, there's, she said there was a new map.
That's a copy of a faded one, basically.
But there's new ones, that's from 2016, I think.
2016 is the most recent.
I thought she said she had new ones.
Well, if she has new ones, then I don't know anything about them. Is there a 2019 map now? Because C.B. and Mahar referenced a 2019 zoning map and all of their information, and that one's 2016.
Who referenced it?
C.B. and Mahar, the people that were here for Croker.
C.B. and what?
C.B. and Mahar, it's the name of the engineer.
Okay.
Uh, uh.
Yeah. So yeah, so like this map here shows green and yellow, that one's all yellow.
Yeah.
So we have electronically, because you printed these four people, so we just need one to go to Staples.
This map?
Yeah.
To be that way.
Yes, yes, please.
I can do that.
Yes, please.
That would be awesome.
Um, and the lobster for your bedrooms?
Yes, LD 2003, so I was gone, um, so where, I read the emails, are we not putting, if we do anything with it, we're doing it later? Is that what I understand?
Max doesn't think, so we are, and if it happens in July, we have what we need to move forward with the ordinance, but Max is pretty sure it's not gonna, it'll have a two-year flag.
Funny mention, I think he, he may have flipped his six into nine in his mind, because now that you say that, I heard him say 2019 when he referenced it, and it's not, it's 16.
But that map, that purple map right there.
Yeah, that's 2016.
He must have, he must have just accidentally, I'm sorry, he must have just mistook it, I guess.
So it's, um, the language is ready for LD 2003?
Okay.
But we're not, we're waiting to go, I guess, that's the way to put it, we don't really.
Do you have a printed copy of that, Harley, this, this stuff that Max did, the new language and all that kind of?
On what they did in the last meeting?
No. Because every time I print something that comes through in the email, it re-formats it for some reason.
Yeah, Max didn't give me his edited.
You emailed it out. I lost.
I guess, I don't remember that, um, I don't have it printed out, but I can print one out for you.
Okay.
Are you gonna be at that?
Maybe.
Well, now it'll be a budget in the seventh.
Right, yeah, I'll have it for Thursday, uh, on the LD 2003 train, behind your minutes, you'll have a printout of the schedule, there's a bunch of hearings that are coming up, if anyone wants to.
What's your date of the live hearing?
It's in your packet, and the last date is May 30.
So I'm pretty confident that July 1st is not gonna be a due date, because the hearings I mean, they're.
It can strain the things, but yeah.
But yeah, so you can attend and testify, or you can just.
Two in, two out. So you open. All right. Put this in here, 8:26. Okay. Um, and I had other things, but I think it's 8:05.
With improvement.
So we're gonna wait, no, we're still on other business, Suzanne. She's giving it. How much coffee have you had today?
I mean, closer.
More.
Closer.
All right, um, oh, so the applications, all three of those were a little different, somewhat, one of them was the most recent, the other two were old ones, the forms. And I know we're in a transition period, but when they come in with them, can you just make sure that it's like the most recent one? Because some of them said that they had to provide one copy and then three at the meeting, and, um, I think the first one was the only one that was like the correct one, that had, just, because I got all kind of messed up, but. Just to make sure that like, I remember the right ones.
Well, if they download it, invite it to Harley.
Yeah, he still started, it was a long time ago, so that should.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
That should be filtered through.
Yeah, it should be, I'm just saying, you know.
But come in to just take a look.
All right, we have four sets of minutes here. All right, first one is February 14. So that was our regular meeting, not one of our workshops. Have you guys had a chance to look at these at all? No?
I didn't look at it, so you, I usually don't have any chance to look at it. Yeah, February 14, those, they're not the meeting.
Right, okay. So if you're gonna just take a minute and look at it, somebody can throw a motion up there?
Motion to approve the minutes, as written. I didn't tell you.
Are we, or just a perечине individually?
Yes.
So this is motion to approve February 14?
Yes, thanks, the regular meeting. All right, any discussion about the minutes? Try to vote. Vote to approve the minutes as presented for February 14th, regular meeting, all in favor, those are good. And then, February 21st, that was our workshop. With Max to look at. With Max to look at. I think the only thing, Carly, is it doesn't say what the workshop is for, really, in the very, well, I guess it says item three. Okay, nevermind. Alright, I'll write down these. So whenever you're ready, you're gonna do this to me.
Motion to approve the February twenty-first minutes entered second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All is in favor of approving the February twenty-first minutes of our special workshop for LD 2003. unanimous? March seven. Yeah, another workshop. For the LD 2003 housing density rule changes to the ordinance. You have it?
I have the seven, that was over for the fourteen. Or the twenty-first, anyway.
Yeah, I'm realizing I didn't print out the twenty-first. Do you want to print those out now or do you want to just approve them?
No, it's February twenty-first.
Oh wait.
I was talking about, I'm on the next one, sorry.
March twenty-first.
Oh, March twenty-first, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's April March.
That's the meeting that John wasn't there.
Do you want me to print those out so you can review them or do you wanna approve them next month?
We should approve them next month.
Yeah, I'll see one.
Okay.
For the twenty-first.
No, because I definitely didn't.
But we have seven, so...
I think they'll look good. Motion to approve the minutes entered second.
Alright, all is in favor of approving March seven workshop minutes. Okay. All in favor? unanimous is voted. So did you have the twenty-first?
No, I didn't. I had, I had February twenty-first. Oh, oh, you have it now?
We both have it. If you want it, you can.
Oh, you have the March twenty-first?
Oh.
Where'd you get these from?
I think she printed my email.
Oh. Alright, you wanna print these with you, I mean...
I'll get you a copy for this. Jamie and I have looked at it already. We can have a look at it now. We can approve them or we can change and wait to next week.
No, I'd like to do the showstopper. Motion to approve as we're...
Any discussion? All is in favor of approving the March twenty-one minutes for the workshop.
One minute's back.
I too, thank you. Alright, all those minutes are approved. Good job with all of that LD 2003 stuff when I wasn't able to come. I appreciate that. So there was a final document, right? That someone sent out?
Yeah. Max sent it to us.
Max sent it to everyone, yeah. Okay. So do you have it?
I do.
You, okay, alright. So if you could just give me, I'll print it for now.
Oh, yeah.
I would take that and then we're just waiting.
Right, it's not even on the attorney to review.
Because Max didn't wanna run up a bill for something that we're not in two, four years to date. Totally, totally get it. I'm just hoping that it doesn't just slide through in June and in July or scramble. If that happens and it actually is enacted July first, we're gonna have a little bit of a pre-meeting for our regular meeting the week before.
Well, you could, we could also, that's at the timeframe when there may be other ordinance or special meetings, like the comp plan. If it gets approved, that's something that we could, what I'm saying is if the state lets it run and it's gonna be enacted in July first, our regular meeting is the second Tuesday of July, we will have a meeting the first Tuesday of July to get our game plan of what we're going to do based on what we have. Because if it still goes through and we don't have ordinances in place, we need to get our heads straight about how it works.
Except that the first Tuesday in July is the fourth of July.
Your press center buzzed.
We'll pick a day.
Well, I would think more barbecue.
We will, we will meet before our meeting. Or we'll move our meeting off for Tuesday or something.
Yeah, you could just...
So you guys okay with that? I mean, I don't know what else we could do if that's the situation.
Well, we should know by July. I don't know when the comp plan's gonna have to have its own town meeting. And figure we can throw in, if LD 2003 is approved, that could be popped into that meeting. Because that's about what I think the comp plan's being presented.
Regardless of whether we have an ordinance in place or not, if they're gonna show up the second week in July, we need to be prepared. So that's my plan, at least for that, so I stop worrying about it. So, alright, next meeting is... Why do I keep losing my agenda?
I probably missed it a lot from here. We forgot in papers.
Did you?
I think so.
It's the ninth.
Sorry, yes, May ninth. Think of anything else in between now and then. So Carly, are you gonna set up a hearing for them?
Yes.
I'm ninety-five percent sure that they're coming back.
Yeah.
I just want some guidance. So, of where it is?
Of what properties you mean?
Of what properties, yeah. So I can pull out the tax map and we can, we can do that now, actually. Can I get a copy of this?
So, are you wondering if like where the wetland is that he's talking about or?
No, I just wanna know what a butter's, because Jared said everyone impacted by it. Which, does that include Meadows Road or?
Uh...
What map is that?
The teeny tiny map. That's why I was saying a tax map to know.
What is it, what is it, what section of that?
What se...
What map? Did I look it up to find out who the...
I don't know what map it is.
Yeah, it looks...
It sounds like the state road. We don't, I don't have it settling on us.
It's a U, but it looks like U seven in that area.
It looks like one big parcel, honestly.
Yeah, it does.
It looks like probably FW Web.
Right.
FW Web.
Yeah, all of...
Right, like I know the butters of the property, but it sounded like you wanted more.
So like, like looks like FW Web.
I think it's U seven.
That's Paquette. So I think it's just that...
There aren't more than that. There really aren't more than that.
Right.
I just don't, if you wanted like Meadows Road, like people, like woodickers always get impacted by flood. Anything like that.
Where's woodickers?
They're next to the Grange.
Yeah, that's all flooded again.
So FW Web.
And just Paquette.
And Paquette, okay. And regular butters.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I was thinking, should we put, like usually, where's the map? I don't need that, but thank you. Usually you put a legal notice in the classified section for public hearings. Should we go with an ad in the front of the paper? Do we think that the newspaper garners that attention?
I read the paper, but I don't think that...
I think you send out your email and it'll get around.
And I would send just a certified letters to parcels.
Yeah, certified to the parcels.
Right.
That was the other thing I wanted to talk about. You just reminded me. Notifications. We talked a long time ago about notifications. And that we probably should notify for every application, not just the ones that have hearings. So like the neighbors to a woman who's here for her home occupation and the expansion and that sort of thing. So we don't have to talk or decide about it tonight, but just think about it. Is that we have very certain ones that have to be certified mail for the hearings. All the hearings have to be certified mail to the butters. And I know that down to Secus, the people across the water probably didn't get notification because that's not...
An abutter.
An abutter, technically. So... Anyway, I don't know, I wasn't hearing that, but I'll ask you.
Where do you stop though, right? Like if you did something, it's a vinyl, would you be notifying people Williams Island or, you know?
Correct, correct. My concern is that we have definite guidelines for the ones that have to be done certified mail for the hearings. But it's not a bad idea and those cost a lot of money. And yes, the applicant pays the fee. But I think as a town, we should probably start at least regular mailing to butters for other things like the home occupancy or an expansion or any of that sort of thing is my feel. It doesn't have to be certified. It would still come from the town, from probably Carly, to the correct address, not someone's different address.
Address of the tax bill.
It would be the address on the tax bill. But just so that they have some notification and maybe we have some better participation in meetings and people being happy that they know what's going on.
Do we know what other towns do?
What's the timeline that this woman with the home occupation started the process to give Carly the time to send the notice out? What's the...
That's that fifteen days.
Well, and that's...
That's the fifteen days.
Actually, I'm gonna recommend, if we're talking about changing notifications, I personally think we should change. I know we just changed the deadline for applications to be in. But if applications have to be in fifteen days in advance, so I can give fourteen days notice, that's an issue when an application isn't determined to be on the agenda until... I think pushing personally, and this is completely just my opinion, but I think that applications should be due the month before the meeting to give plenty of time to review, plenty of time to make sure that we can get those notifications out.
So are you talking about the non-hearing ones or?
I'm talking about all applications. Just because two weeks, like this two weeks before the meeting was kind of a scramble to get everyone on the same page of what's gonna be on the agenda and... And that's not a...
So if you wanna say it's...
It's not that anyone did anything wrong. I just think giving more time helps everyone.
Four weeks prior to the meeting notice. So the, the public hearing has to be fourteen days before the meeting, which is the day after the deadline, correct?
Public notification has to be mailed out.
Yes.
For the public hearing, it's be mailed out two weeks prior, yeah.
Right, so fourteen days. And day fifteen is when they come in, like at the end of the day. So you have to know ahead of time if there's gonna be a hearing and usually...
Right, I have to...
The hearings are things that we know are coming anyway. The problem with this last one is it came in and then, I mean, I didn't know for four, five days. It's just, yeah, so it was a personal...
Well, the problem with all applications is that everyone waits until the deadline, rightly so, to get their information in. So you don't have any extra time. It's day fifteen...
There's no fudge factor.
At four P.M. when we're walking out the door. Literally ninety percent of the applications come in at three fifty-five on Monday. And I have to put those in the mail, which leaves, the mail comes from my office and right at I have until the end of the day to go to the post office. That gives me twenty...
So you want the Friday before? Or maybe even...
No, I want people months in advance to make sure that nothing's being rushed and messed up and everything's... That's just, like I said, it's not my decision. That's just my two cents for what it's worth. And we don't have to make a decision on that at all tonight, just food for thought. Or at least three, you know, like some, like July fourth is not gonna be, it's gonna change the meeting schedule. So it should be a timeline of, you know, three weeks before the set meeting date.
Alright.
So whenever, because whenever you move the meeting, that starts to kicker.
So Carly, you want thirty days. What about ones that are not certified for a hearing if we decide to do just mailings for people?
Should we check with another town and see what the towns are doing?
We can. I'm just asking what people's opinions are.
I don't, I just don't think we should be doing anything more than like a neighboring town as far as the notice is going.
Why? You don't think it would be nice to know that your neighbor was gonna put in a barbershop next to you?
If it's permitted by that name supporting it, like what? What say?
I could say that the city event only sends notifications for subdivisions, like expansions go through the code officer.
That's the only town they notify.
Maybe for businesses. Significant applications. They don't send them out for busy applications.
Yeah, I mean, and I was...
I'm not supposed to, but it's a lot of work, like, you know, we, like, I don't wanna say Suzanne, but I guess Suzanne put it back on the town, right? Like it used to, like it used to be the applicant did all that. And to me...
He didn't do it all.
Right. No, I think it's appropriate to have the town handling it.
But are we the only town that does that? I'm not aware of any other town, like, because we do it, we do it at work all the time.
The notifications?
Yeah, we do it at work, for work, and we have to notify, like, sometimes like three hundred butters. The town doesn't do it, we have to do it.
Yeah, but well, it's...
I think it's wrong for the town to have.
Yeah, but it's not, you have no way to quantify if they're actually doing it and to the right address.
Correct. That's why we swapped it.
That's why I changed, because there's fictitious notification is absolutely happening.
I don't, I don't think it's a huge burden for the certification. Their state required, their state required that they're certified mail. And we moved it to the town doing it because we weren't, we didn't really have a process to validate that the applicant was doing it. So it was just easier. Yeah, so it's just easier.
When you do it, Carly, you like have to look at each, you know, like each, like you take a parcel and you go all the way around. Because like in a parcel, like they hit button and it just gives you a printout.
Yeah. Then you guys have that.
I'm just saying, just saying.
I can get a...
And the applicant pays for it also. So it's not, it's part of the application process.
But...
So there's seven butters, butters that get certified mail and it's two dollars and ten cents a piece?
Right, but it's probably time also, like the...
Well, right, but this was, this was Carly's proposal in the first place, is to notify everybody of everything.
Well, no, that was yours. My community was pushing it back, but we can...
No, I mean, months ago, we were proposing the town, the planning board should not be, not... Shouldn't be discouraging notifications of people in town that things were going on. So that's where all this came from. I mean, we can, I guess, just think about it. I don't think it's a bad idea. I don't think it would cost a lot of money. It's just postage. I think it would go far to Goodwill and people in town.
Or you, you should like come up with like a form letter that says you're being notified that there's a home occupation for applied at...
Yeah.
And that's, and it's, and it goes.
It's just easy to do. And then, I get what you're saying about the fifteen days. I thought it was short too, but I didn't even think we'd get the fifteen days. We fought for fifteen days, so we'll have to go back and see what the select board says about more. I personally think thirty is too many. I think that that's...
Three weeks.
Puts a lot. I think three weeks is probably enough. And I, and I think if the day after they come in, if you just shoot us all a note to let us know what's there.
The problem is, is I leave at three thirty on Mondays, so I didn't find out about an application until...
No, I mean the next day.
Right, I didn't find out for two days.
So maybe internally, we need to work that out.
No, absolutely, yes.
The person that you work with in the front room.
Just took the box and didn't tell anyone that there was an application there, so John and I thought that...
I wasn't here either.
John wasn't here until Wednesday.
It sounds like something that the select board should deal with internally with the staff to try to maybe...
Well, I'm not supposed to take it to like three weeks. It's, it only gives a one-day buffer to, to, to meet her schedule.
Right, but if... It doesn't matter how many days you have. If someone in the office is going to, going to receive it besides these two and then not tell them that it's there, you've got a problem.
Yeah, Christine, being the supervisor, should deal with that.
Yeah, I mean, that's something that needs to probably be addressed, but... So let's...
Think on deadlines.
Right on. Let's think on that and deal with it next time, because it is eight thirty and I promised to try to keep these meetings to eight thirty.
And I'm pretty sure next month is gonna look a lot like this month, because...
So it's Friday.
Those people are gonna be coming back. I know there's a garage that they're in the process of getting their stuff together.
Right.
I met with the expansion that we bumped off today. He should be ready and then...
There's another one that you bumped off today? Or it showed up today?
No, the... No, the.
The one that we're supposed to see last month.
Beres, brothers.
Oh, I thought you meant, I thought that was the first one that you retired on.
So, I met with him today, who wants to come next month, and then the people who are gonna put up the tower for Sayaraw County on the town's property also wanna come. So, that's another concern that I have.
That was my other thing, that's what it was. Um, we, and we should decide this tonight, based on what you're saying right now. We need to decide if we're just gonna do free form or whether we're going to have a stopping time for our meetings. So say you've got five applicants, if we can get them all done by a set time, then fine, if we can't, then the ones that don't get heard have to go to the next meeting.
But then how do you, how do you.
Or, or, or we decide there's three and that's it, after three they move to the next meeting. And, I mean, always if we find that we're having five or six in a meeting, we can always either extend it or we could say, well, we'll meet the second Tuesday, and then if we can't finish them all on the second Tuesday, then we'll meet the third Tuesday to finish off the list. So we need to really figure that out because it's getting.
This is gonna keep going this way, it's like two meetings a month, I guess.
Because he, he had a fourth one, but it wasn't finished. So that's why Crocker got in in the fourth one when, the, the, um, the expansion.
There was an expansion, yeah. I met him and coached him today, and he's planning to be ready for the next one. And then, like I said, then the other ones that we potentially have coming, the gravel people coming back, the tower, the communications tower going in, another garage that's gonna be going in.
Don't we have to, is the communication tower too tall and we have to change it or is that? Suzanne, that's not part of the discussion that we're getting right now, we gotta just go add it and.
Right, so we, we have two choices.
So.
And the other thing is, the other thing is, is like, as you can see to your suggestion in the email, I swapped that around. I kicked Beres off, Maybrad will get in, but you said we should base it on who's complete on the deadline. Well, she wasn't here and I wasn't even here that afternoon, so they can't base it off of that.
I think it's, I think it's first come, first served, so if you get like six of them, this is how I, and you guys chime in, I'm talking too much, but if you get six of them, one, and they came in, you number one, two, three, four, five, six, okay, one is complete, good, two is not, no, three is, that becomes your second one, four is, that becomes your third one, and then if we've decided on three, then one, three, and four, make it two cycles out for the next meeting and then five and six, wait.
Then they, then they, Carly too, for.
You know, encourage, yes. They'll encourage people to do it faster.
So, that also, it has to be, that, those applications, that determination has to be made before Carly has to put the notification or, you know, put the, sorry, put the agenda together.
Right.
So.
Right, well, the agenda.
No, agenda's not the problem, the notifications are the problem.
Yeah.
I mean, but the agenda isn't.
Well, yeah, but it was this month, the agenda was a problem this month. So, that's what I'm saying, we don't know, we don't know who's complete on the deadline, they drop them off at three fifty-five, so you can't base it on that.
No, no, I don't, I don't mean, when they come in, number them, and then you know who was first, second, third, fourth, and fifth, and then when it's determined which ones are complete.
Right.
Then they get put on the agenda in the order for which they physically came in.
They should be timestamped.
Yeah, we should, we should get a timestamper that shows up.
So, so even if she's not here, anyone can timestamp it to.
And then, we can, uh.
Does that help? Does that help to cross the.
Do you want to have a, do you wanna just put a, have a potential second meeting next month just to prepare for it?
No.
Okay.
And I guess after the deadline, darling, as soon, as soon as you get enough of your free time to, to pick stuff up and look at, same with the other members, the better, then that way we can say before Carly has to put the agenda together.
Yeah.
These, these are complete, these are not complete, whichever.
And if we start getting eight applications, then you say, okay, maybe we need to do a set, but until that time, I wouldn't commit any more time to the second Tuesday of the month. So do you wanna cap it at three applications?
Well, I don't know, what do you guys think? How do you feel about?
I think if you do a timeframe in a meeting, you're gonna run into an issue if somebody rambles on for too long and there's gonna be somebody mad at that. It was supposed to be, not how they're gonna show up to. Exactly.
Right, so I try really hard to keep the extra chatter down and.
It happens.
But in, in, and it happens. So, I think everyone needs to be heard, but I think the chatter needs to stop and be held down a little bit, but you know, the home occupation is only gonna take so long.
Agreed.
With the site plan or somebody, which is gonna take longer. So, it's hard to gauge number, I'm, so you don't like the time thing?
I just feel bad for the applicants, like somebody would show up.
Right.
Yeah, if they're, if they're just comes up.
Or someone like, sure.
That's something.
Wasn't on the agenda but had a question also.
Right.
Right.
Well, a lot of boards do it that way though.
Is there a way to say we will only do three applications if their site plans are two and then two, you know, can you have it weighted on?
We could decide, I guess, but that's not fair to an applicant if they don't know the rules before they throw their stuff in. You know what I mean?
Or three site plans and one home occupation or one business or one.
I just say, we just suck it up and we say three, no matter what they are, you know what I mean, it is what it is, right?
We could do that, I mean, some of the, the, I know Brunswick and Thompson do it that way, but then again, they have a planner. Um, they cut it off at three, so, I mean, some people put their applications in and they wait three or four months before they go. And it's not cool, but people get their stuff in early, for sure, because if they're number four, they don't make it.
Right.
Um, we could do it at three, I mean, to me, I don't really care the way, I just know that like after eight thirty, I'm about done.
Pretty much done.
And, so I mean, if we had three and it's coming until nine.
Yes. I know I would be worried, so I, I'm on a fifteen-hour day right now.
Do we do?
I just started at six this morning, so.
You can go to three o'clock again.
Nope.
Suzanne, do we do three and then cut it at eight thirty or?
Three and, what is that?
Well, you can't really, I just wanna be out here at three. Just wanna be out at three.
Well, I think you can base it on the applications that come in, like four home occupations come in, say take all of them, you don't have to make a blanket decision.
But that's not fair if we don't have a policy and all of a sudden we bump someone, like, well, why? Well, we've decided that you're too many this month. That's not right.
Well, you can still have time stamping, go in, go in order, but base.
Right, but you either have to say only so many or a certain time, or maybe there's a third option. What are you saying? Because you got a lot of them.
Yeah, I'm on board with the only so many in a meeting.
Yeah.
Because that, it limits the people getting angry and it limits the overall.
So the number is certain at the time.
Yeah. Right, so if somebody pays, you pay like an architect or whatever, come here, right, and go up to like a eight twenty-nine and get told. Well, that's just it, yeah, if you're coming from over, you know, if you pay an year to, I mean, you pay thirty hours of time if they're there.
Right, that's good, that's good. You're right.
And if you're coming back again, that's additional costs, I mean, that's nothing to pay.
And you have your engineer there.
That's not something, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you can for them.
Exactly.
So is, is three the number?
I think three is the right. I mean, we had three tonight.
And two of them are pretty easy.
Two of them are fairly easy, one of them was quite a bit.
Exactly.
We had three of those Maybrad ones tonight, it wouldn't have been good.
And then we had the.
The applicant come.
Then we had.
Right.
And yes, we had.
Does the public hearing count as its own?
No, as a one.
You never know when they're coming.
Oh, the, oh, you.
I have the public hearing.
Public hearing, that's a comment. No, I wouldn't, no, I wouldn't think so.
Because they usually do that like a half hour sooner.
No, we just do it at six. Jerry and I can't make it till six, I don't know about your schedule.
It's pretty tight.
Yeah, we're not, I thought about that too, we start earlier, I'm like, there's no way I can start earlier. I work till five forty-three and then truck myself over here to stay.
And we call it the meeting from the second.
Yeah, I don't think you should inconvenience yourselves.
No, we all have jobs.
The meeting is at six and that's it.
Yeah, unless you guys wanna change the meeting, then.
You do what you do.
It seems to be the sweet spot, because it's late enough.
I know for sure.
And then it's early enough that eight thirty is only two and a half. Alright.
Alright.
So we do the three.
Three.
I motion that we enact a policy that we only take three applications per month. Or per meeting, sorry, per meeting, does not include hearings as a separate item. And. I don't think I have to say anything about numbering the things when they come in, that's it. And then if you guys can use that process of just numbering them as they come in. And the next day, let us know what's there and whatever, and we'll be better at going in and getting copies and, and looking through them and then we'll just.
So that was the motion?
Yes.
So a second, a second motion.
You can say that, that extra at the end, I forget that, extra at the end, I'm sorry. Any further discussion? Okay, so, all those in favor of three and all the others, I said.
And all these off.
Unanimous.
No, quick, what should we do with Jerry?
Most of it, Jerry.
Further discussion, all those in favor?
Thank you.